Good afternoon. Is everyone settled outside? I know that there are some chairs out there. Have they had a chance to settle in? Good afternoon. Greetings to the new county council, to our new executive, friends, elected officials, and other guests who are in attendance today. Newly renovated chamber which is going to accommodate the council work for the foreseeable future. It is my distinct honor and pleasure to preside over this historic occasion. We have a full program, so if you have a program, let's begin. You can follow along.
Shall we pray? Eternal God, from the beginning of this nation, those who have sought to serve in public office have looked to you for guidance, wisdom, and resolve. The founders of our nation and the framers of our constitution, we have learned that we should seek to be a people that invoke the name of God on behalf of all who would serve in the public interest. So it is that today we once again look unto the hills from which comes our help. Our help comes from the Lord who made heaven and earth. We come before you today on behalf of these eleven persons who are to be sworn in as the first persons to serve as the county council for Cuyahoga County. As they embark upon their duties, we pray that you would crown their heads with wisdom, herd their hearts with courage, equip their tongues to speak truthfully, and indow their spirits with patience sufficient for the task that lies ahead. They enter upon their new responsibilities in the shadow of public scandal and corruption. And as a result, they will endure more scrutiny of their words and their deeds than any of them might yet fully comprehend. So we pray prepare them to work together in such a way that the clouds that have hung over the public's perception of county government can be fully and finally lifted. We pray, oh God, that they will always act with transparency. We hope they will always and everywhere act collegially and cooperatively and resist all tendencies for cliques or schisms or partisan divides. May each of them that have been elected to serve do so with the public interest as their chief concern. May they likewise work effectively and productively with the new county executive to accomplish the people's business. We pray today for the families of those who will be serving our county. May those in the family offer that level of encouragement and support and steadfast love that will daily refresh and sustain these council members as their service consumes both time and energy. Bless Cuyahoga County and all of its citizens on this day of new beginnings. Our Father's God to thee, Author of liberty, to thee we sing. Long may our land be bright with freedom's holy light. Protect us by thy might, great God, our King. Amen.
Thank you Reverend for those inspiring words. We will now call upon the Honor Guard.
Attention! Over! Yeah, ho! Yeah, face! Freezing! Out!
By the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(singing) By the dawn's early light, what so brightly we hailed at the twilight's last gleam. Whose bright lights and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the grand parts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, how does that star sing, good, better yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Attention! Face! Power! Mark! Attention! Face! Post! Freezing! Out! Power there! Out!
A big voice for a little girl. Please be seated. They'll be challenged in their work to reassure citizens that their best interests are protected. Thank you. All right, from District 5, Michael Gallagher. The oath is going to be administered by my colleague, Eileen T. Gallagher.
Thanks, Chuck.
I, Michael J. Gallagher...
I, Michael J. Gallagher...
Do solemnly swear to uphold...
Do solemnly swear to uphold...
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
...the Constitution of the State of Ohio...
The Constitution of the State of Ohio...
...and the laws of the State of Ohio...
And the laws of the State of Ohio...
...and the Charter of Cuyahoga County...
And the Charter of Cuyahoga County...
...and to faithfully discharge the duties...
And to faithfully discharge the duties...
...of the office of...
Of the office of...
...member of the county council...
Member of the county council...
...of Cuyahoga County, Ohio.
Of Cuyahoga County, Ohio.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Your Honor. Congratulations. Here, they want to take your picture.
Oh, do they?
Yeah. Here, so move over this way. Come on in. Right here. There we go. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay, we'll try and do this a little differently. All right. District 6, Jack Schron. We'll have you stand a little. I think they need to see us a little bit.
Okay.
The camera's over there, so...
Okay.
Very good. I, Jack Schron...
I, Jack Schron Jr.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...to uphold the Constitution of the United States...
To uphold the Constitution of the United States...
...the Constitution of the State of Ohio...
The Constitution of the State of Ohio...
...the laws of the State of Ohio...
The laws of the State of Ohio...
...and the Charter of Cuyahoga County...
And the Charter of Cuyahoga County...
...and to faithfully discharge...
And to faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
...of member of county council...
A member of county council...
...of Cuyahoga County, Ohio.
Of Cuyahoga County, Ohio. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[1220.52][1220.52](applause)
Congratulations. I think they want to step over to the blue line and take a picture. Yeah. Thank you. All right. Moving along, we have in District 7, Yvonne Conwell. Kevin? We'll never see as many Bibles as we've seen in this room today, too. How are you, Kevin? Good to see you. All right.
Good to see you again, Judge.
All right. I think they need to have you stand there so they can see you. All right. Very good. I, Jocelyn Conwell. I'm sorry. Yvonne...
That's okay. Different family member.
Don't look at me, Jeff.
No, I'm sorry.
I graduated with her, so... I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
Well, I needed a joke.
Oh, there you go. Chuck has a joke. Here, you can relax a little bit. I, Yvonne Conwell...
I, Yvonne Conwell...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...to uphold the Constitution of the United States...
To uphold the Constitution of the United States...
...the Constitution of the State of Ohio...
The Constitution of the State of Ohio...
...the laws of the State of Ohio...
The laws of the State of Ohio...
...and the Charter of Cuyahoga County...
And the Charter of Cuyahoga County...
...and to faithfully discharge the duties...
And to faithfully discharge the duties...
...of the office of member...
And the office of member...
...of the county council...
Of the county council...
...of Cuyahoga County, Ohio.
Of Cuyahoga County, Ohio.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
My apologies. All right, here, let's step over by the blue line.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And once again, my apologies. You didn't think this was going to go without a hitch, did you? District 8, Purnell Jones. And I believe Judge Sarah Harper will be swearing him. Your Honor? Hello. How you doing? Your Honor?
You remind me so much of your dead...
Repeat after me. I, Purnell Jones Jr.
I, Purnell Jones Jr.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...to uphold the Constitution of the United States...
To uphold the Constitution of the United States...
...the Constitution of the State of Ohio...
The Constitution of the State of Ohio...
...and the laws of the State of Ohio...
And the laws of the State of Ohio...
...and the Charter of Cuyahoga County...
And the Charter of Cuyahoga County...
...and to faithfully discharge the duties...
And to faithfully discharge the duties...
...of the office...
Of the office...
...member of the county council of Cuyahoga County, Ohio.
Member of the Cuyahoga County Council of Cuyahoga County.
Ohio.
Ohio.
Great. Congratulations.
Are you going to be able to do it? Sure, if you want it. Thank you. Nice to see you again. District 9, C. Ellen Connolly. And I believe that the Honorable Ronald Adrien will be swearing her in.
Everybody situated? Raise your right hand. I, C. Ellen Connolly...
I, C. Ellen Connolly...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...to uphold the Constitution of the United States...
To uphold the Constitution of the United States...
...the Constitution of the State of Ohio...
The Constitution of the State of Ohio...
...and the laws of the State of Ohio...
And the laws of the State of Ohio...
...and the Charter of Cuyahoga County...
And the Charter of Cuyahoga County...
...and to faithfully discharge the duties...
And to faithfully discharge the duties...
...of the office of member...
Of the office of member...
...of county council...
Of county council...
...of Cuyahoga County, Ohio...
Of Cuyahoga County, Ohio...
And this I shall do...
And this I shall do...
As I shall answer unto God.
As I shall answer unto God.
All right, District 10, Julian Rogers. This is my district, so I'm quite honored. I, Julian Rogers...
I, Julian Rogers...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...to uphold the Constitution of the United States...
To uphold the Constitution of the United States...
...the Constitution of the State of Ohio...
The Constitution of the State of Ohio...
...the laws of the State of Ohio...
The laws of the State of Ohio...
...and the Charter of Cuyahoga County...
And the Charter of Cuyahoga County...
...and to faithfully discharge the duties...
And to faithfully discharge the duties...
...of the office of member...
Of the office of member...
...of the county council...
Of the county council...
...of Cuyahoga County, Ohio.
Of Cuyahoga County, Ohio.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Here, let's move over to the blue line. Very good. And rounding the bend here. Sunny Simon. The oath will be administered by Mayor Georgine Wheelo. Who is no stranger to the Justice Center.
Nice to see you, Judge.
Raise your right hand.
I, Sunny Simon...
I, Sunny Simon...
...do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
...to uphold the Constitution of the United States...
To uphold the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Ohio...
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio...
...and the laws...
And the laws...
...of the State of Ohio...
And the laws of the State of Ohio...
...and the Charter...
And the Charter...
...of Cuyahoga County...
Of Cuyahoga County...
...and to faithfully...
And to faithfully...
...discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
...of the office...
Of the office...
...of member...
Of member...
...of the county council...
Of the county council...
...of Cuyahoga County...
Of Cuyahoga County...
Ohio.
Ohio. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
You wanted to step over your blue line there. Oh, for our picture?
Yeah, your picture.
You got to step on the blue line.
Step on the blue line.
Where? I guess there's some blue line.
You're good? Any blue line?
Good?
Okay.
Good? Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Very good. Well, all oaths having been administered, I would like to invite our newly sworn council members to step up and take your place. I think they should be marked, or you know where you're going to be. Very good. And please remain standing for just a moment. He'll take a picture. Okay? If you stand behind your chair for just a moment. Okay. Please be seated. All right. Now, there is one more seat missing there. Empty seat. Very good. Before I introduce... Before I introduce Ed Fitzgerald, does somebody have a list of folks who, you know, no ceremony is complete without elected officials in attendance, so I'd like to acknowledge them. We have, very quickly here, we have Al Foster, Councilman from Shaker Heights. Arlene Mc... Why don't we hold the applause here? Arlene Mc... Because it's a long list. Arlene McNamara. Georgine Wheelo, our mayor from South Euclid. Councilman Nathaniel Martin from the city of East Cleveland. Councilman Ed Icove from South Euclid. Councilman Jeff Johnson from Cleveland. The Honorable Joe Zone from Cleveland Municipal Court. The Honorable David Mathia from Common Police. Mayor Dean DePiro from Parma. Mayor Dennis Clough from Mayor of Westlake, who administered an oath. Councilman Donna Brady from Cleveland City Council. Councilman Matt Zone. Councilman from the city of Cleveland. Kevin Conwell from the city of Cleveland. Councilman Sean Brennan from Parma City Council. We have Michael Mendalera from the city of Cleveland, Special Assistant to the Mayor's Board. And Valerie McCall, Chief of Government Affairs for the city of Cleveland. And... Are there any others in attendance? Okay. And one of my former colleagues, I might add. Judge Walker? Very good. Anyone else? Yes. Very good. Anyone else? Yes. Oh, Judge Brendan Sheehan, my colleague. I see him waving his hand, so. And I don't know if there's anyone outside. Yes. Welcome. Very good. Anyone else? Is there anyone in the chairs outside?
Jay Westbrook.
Oh, Jay Westbrook? Good to see you. All right. Yes. Welcome. Thank you. Well, thank you for attending. It's important, and I know that council and the new executive will have your support and cooperation and collaboration as we move to the days ahead. I want to briefly give a thanks and acknowledgement to the transition team. And they come in many different forms. It's been a group that has advised and counseled those who are taking on the new government in this past year, and also those who worked very hard to make this ceremony possible. We want to thank them for all their hard work and their commitment. They are appreciated. Also, we have our signers, Peter Parsons and Karen Schiller, who are making that all possible. You can see them to my right. And finally, it is my pleasure to introduce our county executive, Ed Fitzgerald, so that he can address you and the new members of council. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening, everybody. Everyone seems so happy. I want to drag this out for as long as possible until things change. I had an interesting first day. I did not fire Coach Mangini. There were some rumors that that was part of my authority as county executive, but that's exaggerated. But I've enjoyed my first day. This is my first, and I would assume my last, opportunity to ever preside over this body. It's going to be very brief, but because they have not yet elected their own leadership, it falls to me, by our new customs, that I will be calling this meeting to order. So... And there will be plenty of... This really isn't a night for me to give speeches, so why don't we just get down to business? So, I am calling, officially calling, the first meeting of the County Council of Cuyahoga County in its entire history to order. And our first order of business will be to call the roll. So if the clerk could call the roll, please.
Here. Here.
I'm here.
I want to note for the record that all council members are present, and therefore there is a quorum. At this point of the meeting, we're going to go to considerations of any motions that will be made. Does anyone on council have any motions that they would like to make at this time?
Mr. President.
Councilman Miller.
Mr. President, I move that the rules of council previously provided to all members of this body be adopted until March 22, 2011, and would like to speak for a few moments on that issue. Thank you.
Do... Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman Miller.
Mr. President, and my colleagues, I ask for your support for the rules of council as passed by the Interim Committee on Rules on December 30, 2010. While these are interim rules proposed to be in effect until the meeting of March 22, 2011, they are the product of hundreds of hours of work, starting with the transition volunteers and including input from every member of council. Unlike the process of adopting rules in every other legislative body that I've participated in, we submitted the draft rules for public comment. We received over 40 comments, providing more than 100 suggestions, and many of them are included in this draft. These rules are loaded with public process and accountability provisions. They provide for public comment at the beginning and end of every regular council meeting. They contain the enhanced provisions for public notice of all special council or committee meetings that is required by the sunshine law, and require the same notice provisions for council or committee meetings that are adjourned to another place and/or time, which goes beyond the sunshine law. These rules also allow members of the public to be appointed to council subcommittees and participate directly in the legislative process. These rules contain certain provisions designed to help the executive and council work harmoniously together, such as the provision that allows executive appointments to be referred directly to committee without first having to be read at a council meeting. While carefully protecting public meeting and notice requirements, these rules give council tremendous flexibility in doing its work, allowing for standing committees, ad-hoc committees, subcommittees, work sessions, and a committee of the whole, and allowing legislation to be sent to single committees, to joint committees, sequentially, joint committees simultaneously. We will make some refinements and find some needed improvements based on experience before we adopt permanent rules in March. But these rules of council will make Cuyahoga Council competitive in its operating procedures on day one with local legislators that have been operating for decades. I ask for your support for the rules of council.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion by members of council? Hearing none, I will... The motion has been made, and it has been seconded for adoption. I will ask for the clerk to call the roll, please, on this motion.
Yes.
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 The vote on the motion should be recorded as 11 in favor and none opposed, and therefore the motion is considered passed. Any other motions?
Present.
Councilman Brady.
I move that the agenda for the organizing meeting be adopted.
Do I have a second?
Second then.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. The motion has been made and seconded. I will again ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Yay.
Yes.
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 Mr. Jones?
Yes.
The vote, again, was 11 in favor and none opposed, and therefore, again, this motion is to be considered passed. Any further motions or consideration of resolutions? Councilman Gallagher.
In accordance with the charter, I move that Rule 90 requiring that ordinances and resolutions be read at three separate meetings of council, and Rule 13A requiring reference to committee be suspended for purpose of adopting the resolution offered today for the appointment of a clerk of council pro tem.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilman Gallagher, seconded by Councilman Schron. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Yes.
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 Again, the motion was... Should be recorded as 11 in favor and none opposed, and therefore, the motion is passed. Do I have any other motions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Conwell.
I move that council consider a resolution providing for the appointment of Jean Schwartzmer as clerk of council pro tem, and declaring the necessity that the resolution become effective immediately.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I will again ask for a roll call on that motion.
Yes.
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 The motion should be recorded as 11 in favor, none opposed. Therefore, the motion is passed. What that means at this point, ladies and gentlemen, is that Jean Schwartzmer will begin presiding over this, so my time as presiding is over. I hope you all see this as the golden age of your council during this period of time that I was here. And I will return to my new seat over here. Thank you very much.
Hello? That went very well, didn't it? All right. To the executive, to the council members, on behalf of everyone seated here, the court and the citizens of Cuyahoga County, congratulations and best wishes to you all as you assume the duties of your new office. Please serve us wisely and well. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we will now call for the retirement of colors. And the final. All right, please remain standing. Rabbi Susan Stone from the Suburban Temple will give us the benediction. Thank you, Judge. O eternal God of ages past and ages yet to come, thou who art the everlasting togetherness, the never-dimming light, the ever-fulfilling love, whose breath is the surge of life, whose pulse is eternal creation, open thou the curtains of time for this new unfolding. Lead us to the threshold of things yet unborn; make us malleable to learn, flexible to discern, humble in seeking. Teach us, O God, to see beneath surfaces, to look beyond small horizons, to rise above trivialities. Be as a mighty sieve to sift us, as the blazing searchlight to brighten the way; from out of solitude weld us into eternal fellowship; from out of complacency stir us in divine discontent; but from out of fear restore in us the peace of humble striving; out of sheer dreams bring us enduring visions; out of deadly routine point us to pressing purpose; out of weakness grant us strength; out of indecision bring us guided resolution; out of impasse show us direction. Find us and fathom us, free us, fulfill us, fire our imaginations; prepare in us thy divine anticipation, that we may lay hold of those priceless treasures that are so easily missed, so silently lost; chasten us but strengthen us; replenish us, renew us as people, as citizens, as this county; transform us now and never ceasingly, that thy will be done. Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, that the council will reconvene to conduct its business after a short recess. Thank you for all attending. This has been a historic moment. We are adjourned. All right, thank you.